All right, I'd like to call the April Board of Selectmen meeting to order. Ask that you rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first item is approval of the agenda. I have a motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
This is Sean, I'll make a motion, we approve the agenda as proposed.
Thank you, Sean. Motion has been made, any discussion on the agenda? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote, all in favor of approving the agenda, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, aye, agenda's approved. Next item is approval of the minutes of our March 8th meeting. I'd like to call for a motion to approve the agenda, or excuse me, approval of meetings, minutes.
This is Kate, I'll make a motion to approve the March 8th, 2021 meeting minutes.
All right, Kate, Sean can have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 8th meeting, so we can discuss.
Yep, this is Kate, I make a motion to approve the March 8th, 2021 meeting minutes.
Okay, thank you, motion has been made, any corrections or comments on the minutes?
I have none at this time.
Okay, thank you, Sean, I didn't see anything, Kate, do you?
This is Kate, no, no changes here.
All right. Call for vote to approve the agenda of March 8th meeting, all in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
All right, motion carries unanimously, thank you, everyone. All right, next item on the agenda is our public comment session. Comments again are limited to three minutes per person, but with that, I will open the floor, does anyone have a comment they would like to make? Neil, I see in your hand. You're muted, Neil.
How about now?
Yep, now we can hear you.
Um, real quick, I don't know if you've driven down Injun Hollow Road lately, um, few years back when it was brought up, it was to be chip sealed, I brought it up with Chris, asking why, he said it lasts longer. Um, the road is peeling up in many areas, where we're starting to get potholes again, Susie Olson's house, Gary Nielsen's, and scattered around, but there's good chunks taken up, I'm assuming that would be from the plowing this year, because it was done in early fall, so I don't know if the contractor's set to come out and start repairing the road yet again, but it's, um, it's starting to conform to what it was prior to the oil and chip seal putting down. That's all.
Okay, I will ask Chris to take a look at it, Neil. All right, any other comments? All right, hearing none, let's move on to the next item on the agenda, the Selectmen's update. And again, I'd ask my fellow board members to chime up on these or other issues you have. Project updates, I'll start with the Rossi property, the Phase 2 environmental analysis has been completed, we are awaiting the formal report of that analysis, I expect we will be getting it shortly. Scoville Ho, I told you, I mentioned at the last meeting, I believe, that we were thinking about applying for a brownfield grant to help with the cleanup costs, we have put in a grant application, it's the municipal brownfield grant application, total estimated, what we're asking for on the grant is 1.8 million for both environmental and physical issues with the building cleanup. We do have a developer interested in the property, which enhances our chance of getting the, uh, the grant, we should hear something in the next couple of months. Some items on Bridge Road, I think everyone on this call is aware that the state is talking about putting two roundabouts on Saybrook Road at the intersection of Bridge Road and the Route 9 connector. We had a meeting with the design team about this, to update their design thoughts, construction is slated to begin in spring of '23 and last through until the fall of '24, they have agreed to do the construction, majority of it at night, to minimize the impact on, our particular concern was the merchants, because the swing bridge rehabilitation will be going on at the same time, but they will not be doing anything during rush hours, and again, most of their construction work will be done in the evenings. There will be probably in a couple of months, a public information meeting to go over what, review what the plans are and go over them. Other things on Bridge Road sidewalks, we're slated to start the Bridge Road sidewalks in the spring of next year, we will be moving forward with the easements for the sidewalks, we'll talk about that a little later, but we've already approved them, but we are waiting for the state, we need an easement across the DEP property, both for drainage and for construction of the sidewalk, so, and that is taking an unusually long period of time. The other thing I'd like to say about the Bridge Road projects, and actually all the projects in town, we are working on, Joanne, is that we, who is working on updating our project website page, we've got the three Bridge Road project on there, we would have now set that page up, it will send alerts, if you've signed up and are interested in, sign up for our project alerts, you can get the latest updates as we get them. Other projects talked about, Haddon Center sidewalks, connectivity grant, funding that, DOT has finally signed off on our design, we'll be moving forward, the next step for us is getting construction easements on the property owner, just for the construction of the sidewalk, I don't believe there's any actual property ownership, it's just temporary construction easements, and with luck, construction may start later this year. Final thing I've got to say on projects, is it's springtime, so it's gotta be road paving time, project work has started so far on High Street and Lake Avenue, gonna do, right now, the town crew is working on drainage up there, particularly on High Street, then those are gonna be grind grade and repave projects, it'll be going on for a while. And all right now, Chris and I met today to go over our road plan, we've got about 20 years, 20, not 20 years, 20 roads slated for improvement this year, if all goes well, probably a little over a million dollars worth of construction work, I will be submitting an article to the bulletin, I've got to get in later this week, but it'll be in the May edition, I'm gonna focus on roads, we'll list all of them and what's intended for, so, more to follow. Other general information, I mentioned last month, we had hired a finance director, she actually showed up and started working this month, and has so far worked, every day she's supposed to be here, I take that as a good sign, and I'm doing my best not to mess that up, she's doing a fine job for us. Budget status, Board of Finance has the proposed budget as it currently stands, Board of Selectmen has one item to talk about tonight, it's the Valley Shore dispatch cost, we finally got those, we're still waiting for estimates on pensions, we've got an estimate on the health coverage, but not an actual charge from the state, and surprisingly, health coverage is down from what we budgeted from it last year, which appears it was based on an estimate that was higher than it needed to be. Capital budget is still being developed, both the capital budget and the budget will be discussed at a joint Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance meeting, I believe it's next Monday. School budget has been submitted, I think Jen will probably mention that, the share for Haddon, our contribution forward, so $153,000 more than last year, which really, in the overall view of the size of that budget, is not a huge increase, but it's still a fair chunk of money. Final financial thing I want to talk about, just briefly, I'm sure you've heard in the news about the American Rescue Plan, and money's coming to the cities, counties, and states. According to the initial reviews I've gotten, Haddon should be getting on municipal aid about $808,000 and change, that'll be paid out in two tranches, one within the next few months, and then the next, second one a year after. There's also money set aside for counties, since Connecticut doesn't have counties, and it's true for a couple of the New England states, that county money is being prorated and supposed to be going to the municipalities based on population, again, if the figures I've seen preliminary are right, that's another about $1.6 million from Haddon. So we'll have to get some serious thought to the obligation on that. But as of right now, final guidelines on what is allowable and what is not, is being developed by Department of Revenue, internal, the IRS, and that should be out in a couple of months, and once we get that, we can begin some serious thought as to where to, to that money should be going. Public Health, Scott, Sherry, I'll turn it over to you.
All right, Bob, how you doing?
Wonderful, Scott, thanks for being here.
No problem. Yeah, so Haddon, we are getting a little concerned, me and Bob, and obviously, the public, their cases were rising a little bit more than we'd like to see over the last two weeks, but this week, we only ended up with eight, which was good, so I hopeful the trend will continue downward for the next few weeks, so, case wise, at CRAD, we're at 44 cases, that's great, the last two weeks, we were about 78, 85 cases. I want to get to Florida Sherry, just to discuss vaccinations and what she did today with the homebound.
Hi, everybody, our drive-through clinic continues on, and actually, last week, we did 2,300, we finished up all our educators and daycares, so, on all of our eight towns, they're all set, they had every opportunity to get that done, so, we feel good about that for our school community. Today, I did 10 homebound people, or bedbound people, I should said, so those who registered with the state, that they could not get into a car to be able to come to our drive-through, so I received that information for all of our towns, and I visited with Phil Coco, our paramedic, for individual towns, and that was very successful, so, if people cannot get out, there is that registration that they can make, so that all the questions are asked, and we receive the proper information and the proper contact for them, so, if anybody has any concerns or any needs to do, to get vaccinated, either by home or by drive-through, please reach out to us.
So yeah, she's doing a fantastic job with her clinical team, our total numbers are up to 16,910 total vaccinations, so, out of one of the smallest health districts, well, the smallest health districts in the state, we certainly are doing our part. The next groups are kind of unknowns, currently, we've only been doing 18 and up, because we only have the Moderna vaccine, the Johnson &amp; Johnson vaccine, as you probably heard, is slated to go down the next few weeks significantly in Connecticut, they were receiving about 50,000, excuse me, doses, the next few weeks, they're slated to receive about 7,000, maybe 6,000, so, we're good to go, we're clinics are still full, and we'll see how it plays out in the future, a lot of unknowns out there, but a lot of people are getting vaccinated, good coverage rates, as you can see, some of the highest in the state within our areas, so, good job, but we know COVID's out there, we still gotta be vigilant, we're seeing a lot of cases now with the kids that aren't vaccinated, fortunately, they're not getting too sick at this point, but like anything else with this, we don't know what the future holds, so, it's best not to get the virus, that's why we urge everyone to get vaccinated as soon as possible. Thanks, Bob.
All right, thanks, Scott, thanks, Sherry, again, fabulous job from the health district, really appreciate all they're doing, so in particular, for the town, total number of cases we had in March was 74, that's the worst month we've had, April to date, we're about 31 total cases, since this first started, first case reported, 380. One thing I've noticed, Scott, I don't know if you have too, but at least in our cases recently, I would say the average age is definitely going down, I'm seeing a lot more very young children, but the good news is, my interpretation of it is anyway, that the 55 and older, among the first vaccinated group, you're not seeing many of them show up at all, so I think the vaccine is doing a heck of a job.
Yep, we just still want to make sure that everybody understands that even if you're vaccinated, and you have some immunity yourself, we still encourage everybody to wear masks and self, you know, social distance, because we don't have herd immunity, and the highest group right now is 20 to 29, that's actually being positive, with a lot of community spread in the families, so.
Yep, and people, you know, we're starting to see more and more through contact tracing and such, that there are significant, and I don't use that word broadly, but there's a percentage of people that are still getting infected even after a second dose, right? So it's not a perfect system, but what it is doing is suppressing the death within that older age group, and it's doing a fantastic job in the nursing homes, so, really, really good stuff.
Okay, thanks, Scott, thanks, Sherry. Last thing I have to bring up, we have started negotiations with our two unions, the Teamsters for the Public Works and the Clerical Union for the Town Hall employees, and so far, that's proceeding well, we expect not to have any major bumps in the road, and should have contracts signed before the end of the current contract year, so, keeping our fingers crossed on that. All right, Kate, Sean, anything either of you would like to add?
This is Kate.
Go ahead, Kate.
Oh, sorry, Sean, thank you, this is Kate, just wanted to let everyone know, EDC is meeting this Wednesday at 6:30, we have a special guest presentation, Elm Tree Partners is the group who is, I believe, looking at a spot in Tylerville to build apartments, and they've put together a brief presentation on the economic impacts that they, that the apartment, proposed apartment units would have on our area, the town and Middlesex County, the meeting will be up on the town calendar website tomorrow, open to the public, and so, anyone is welcome to come listen if you'd like.
Okay, thank you, Kate, we have the apartment development down there, it's good news, and we've got two proposed, and they are moving forward. All right, Sean?
This is Sean, sorry, I'm having technical difficulties, so I'm on my phone, I was actually, one thing is asked, I was just gonna ask Kate about Wednesday, because I'm gonna be out of town, be out of state, will it be, will it be recorded, because I would like to hear the presentation, so anyway, that the meeting can be recorded, so I can listen at a future time.
This is Kate, yep, yes, we record all of our meetings, and I don't know what type of presentation they have planned, but if it's a traditional PowerPoint, I'll see if they can send the slides over as well.
That'd be great, thank you, I am interested in the, in the, I had heard about the, you know, the apartment proposals just a couple weeks ago, and it sounds interesting, it sounds intriguing, and I'd really like to know about it.
Yes, and this is Kate, and I do believe it has not passed through planning and zoning yet, so this is not a definite by any means, I know their plans went before the architectural, architectural review committee a few weeks ago, but it's my understanding that this development would still have to pass through planning and zoning.
Thank you, Kate.
You're welcome.
Yeah, and Kate, you're correct on that, what did go to the architectural review committee, this is the development on Bridge Road, two phases, 40 units in each phase, one and two-bedroom apartments, but the developer seems to be serious, and it's moving forward. Okay, with that, it's time for the Board of Education update, Jen, you're on.
Thanks, Bob, hi, everyone, Jen Favalora from the Board of Ed, we had a lot of meetings in March, mostly about the budget, but we also got to talk about some, some good news, like our seventh grade student, Lily Austin, who placed first in our region in December for the Lions International Peace Poster Contest, this contest is something that we participated with, the Killingworth Lions, for at least 10 years now, with our wonderful art teacher, Jill Thompson, she placed first in our region in December, and then went on to place second in our state in February, Lily is the first middle school student at HK to place at the state level, and her poster is displayed at the middle school entrance. To update you on the school year, Superintendent Hagman has updated the board on the vaccine clinic coordination for the staff through both the CRAD Health District, thank you very much, and Nutmeg Pharmacy, with many of our educators able to be fully vaccinated through early, by early April, so most of them have gotten their second doses so far. The superintendent also shared that the high school reopening plans continue to move forward, and she is always at every one of our meetings, reiterating mitigation strategies to the community in order to keep our students in school full-time. The facilities committee proposed, and the board agreed, to request proposals from qualified educational consultants and architectural engineering firms for an educational facilities assessment, a demographic study, and a Board of Education master plan. The intent of these requests are to assess the condition of the district's buildings to guide our maintenance and improvements over the next decade, as well as anticipate adjustments needed for future educational needs. The committee also has met with the Killingworth Elementary School PTO to talk to them about their plans to install a new playground at KES. And for the most important news of the night, the 21-22 budget has been approved by the Board of Education for $42,749,049 and 19 cents to be brought to the towns for referendum on May 4th, at both towns' regular voting times. After revenue grants and fund balances, the towns will be assessed about $40,553,509. This budget represents an increase of 2.06% from last year, but remember, last year had a substantial decrease.
Does that make any difference, perhaps?
I'm getting him to vote yes, he will. Um, let me close the door real quick, I'm sorry. Mildly embarrassing, sorry about that. Um, the budget represents an increase of 2.06%, but remember, last year we had substantial decrease in our budget, so the total increase over two years is only $400,135, which is a little bit less than 1%. Breaking the trend from previous years, this year's budget assessment will be an increase for Killingworth, for their share, because Haddon's enrollment is decreasing by 81 students, and Killingworth is increasing by 28 students, and this decrease of Haddon's share of the budget to 60.6%, whereas Killingworth's share will increase to 39.4%. I'm gonna give you a couple more additional important budget highlights, there's a lot in there, and I'll be writing a larger article for, for more information, and I'll be posting that on our Facebook page, but salaries are increasing by only $51,723, because we're reducing five and a half full-time staff, three certified staff and two and a half non-certified staff, we're also having four retirements, this brings our total net reduction of certified staff since 2010 to 29 full-time positions, so when people ask if we are reducing staff, when we reduce, when we decline enrollment, we are. The board is proposing to offset our health insurance benefits increase, which is expected to be about 3.5%, with using $208,000 from our medical self-insurance fund, which was a fund we had while the district was self-insured, it was for administrative and risk management, we had to hold on to it after we were self-insured for about three years, and that ended this year, so we were gonna be using part of that fund to pay for the increase that is expected in insurance. There is a significant increase in special education, $902,000, that's about 17% of the budget that we're proposing here, the bulk of this increase is in tuition, transportation, and professional services to aid our special education students. The board is proposing to make crucial investments in COVID learning recovery for our students, very important, I've been talking to you guys all about this all year long, including adding personal, personalized learning software, which will help to individualize student success and teacher feedback. Additionally, we are expecting federal coronavirus grant funding, and that will be used to invest in reading and math academic support staff, we will use that to expand access to summer school programs, both this year and next year, we will add social emotional programs at, and supports for grades four through 12, and we plan to upgrade the technology and connectivity at our schools, because they're brick buildings, and getting Wi-Fi in there needs a little bit more boost there. Um, this budget proposed includes the full 1% allowed by the state statute to be put into the capital fund to cover planned maintenance, our planned maintenance next year is for the boiler circulation pump at KES, for paving and sealing the parking lots, for repairs and upgrades to the high school greenhouse, and school building painting projects. And then finally, our debt service for the middle school, and the high school, for building the middle school and for the high school energy project, is going to decrease by $326,000 from last year, due to us proposing that we would like to do a fund transfer from the debt premium fund to offset that entire debt interest for the, for the next year. So those were some important highlights, I am always available if people have questions, they can email, they can call, my information's on the RSD website, as is the Board of Education budget, you can read the summary, you can read the full thing on rsd17.org under District Budget Information. And I'm happy to answer any questions from the Board of Selectmen, too, if you have any.
Hi, Jen, this is Sean.
Hi, Sean.
Hi, quick question on that, self-insurance fund that you're using to offset the insurance cost, how much will be remaining in that fund, and what do you anticipate using that for, are you saving it for maybe an offset next year, or any other anticipated expenditures?
I believe we have, I might get this wrong, so don't use this in a quote anywhere, I believe we have about $1.4 million in it, and the goal, I'm not using all of it, is because we don't want to set up a cliff, right, we want to make sure that what we're doing is paying off the increase this year, our intent, granted Board of Education's change over time, our, our hope is to kind of just do that, bits and pieces, as we spend down, and that's the same as the debt premium I talked about, where we're going to be using that to pay off our interest for the next five years, we have some money in there that we can now use, so both of those things are set up, so that we don't have a cliff at the end that we might run into.
Okay, that's what I was assuming, and I was actually, you answered my second question with the, the premium one, but that's what I was assuming, but I just wanted to, you know, in case anybody out there was, was looking, says, huh, they got this money, what are they doing? So we would understand that it is being used going forward for this type of offset, thank you.
Sure.
All right, Jennifer, thank you very much, great presentation as always, very good information. Moving on, next item we have here, Incorporated CRAD update with the Selectmen's update, we talked about COVID tax refunds, Kate, Sean, you should have received in your package the tax refunds for this month, we have real estate tax refunds covering, totaling $6,958.19. I'll note, about $6,350 of that refund is for bills that were paid twice, one was an individual who paid the bill twice online, we've had that happen before, someone hit submit, it doesn't seem to do any... Do anything, they wait, they hit submit again and they end up with a double payment. And the other one, and we had this happen last month as well too, where. With a transfer resident and mortgage company paid. The tax bill, so it was double paid. So, but those, we also have six motor vehicle refunds, those are all pretty routine, none of them exceedingly large. Total for the six, seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and nineteen cents. Can I have a motion to approve the tax refunds?
This is Kate, I'll make a motion to approve the April tax refunds.
Okay, thank you, Kate, any discussion on the tax refunds?
This is Kate, just, uh, thank you to whoever is putting, added the notes column, that's very helpful.
Yeah, thank you very much.
All right, hearing no other comments, all in favor of approving the tax refunds, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All right, motion carries, thank you. All right, moving on, old business. Last month, we discussed two resolutions, one regarding discontinuing of Pine Brook Road in Hattam Neck. Second one. Concerning the acquisition of easements for the Bridge Road sidewalks. Those are up again at this meeting. Primarily because in the Governor's Executive Order, which is seven JJ. Which allows, in fact requires, the Board of Selectmen to approve these without an in-person town meeting. You're also, however, even though it's not a town meeting, you've got to put out a notice as if it was a town meeting. That wasn't done, that's now incorporated in the notice, was in tonight's meeting, a separate legal notice for the. Discussion on the resolutions, so that's why these are in old businesses, were previously approved. But just. At a highlight, Pine Brook Road in Hattam. Hattam Neck area was discontinued, or at least a portion of it, and by the Board of Selectmen in nineteen, I believe it was thirty-three, but it was the thirties. There has since been some confusion as to exactly. What section of the road was it discontinued or not, I will say again, as I did last month, that. Now, as a matter of practice, that section has long been abandoned, all the time I've been in Hattam Neck twenty-four, twenty-five years now. We've always considered that private property owner. Current owner was on both sides of the road and it's actually beyond where their driveway is, which used to be part of the road. And again, the other resolution is just sidewalk easements on Bridge Road. Do we have any discussion on those from either of the two selectmen?
This is Sean, I have none, same as, same as it was.
Yep, this is Kate, I have none either.
Okay, you just passed up, chartered the second bite in an apple, can I have a resolution again to approve the resolutions we've already approved, just. In accordance with the meeting notification.
This is Sean, I will make a motion that we pass the two resolutions, one on the discontinuing of the road in Hattam Neck. And the other one on the easements that we discussed last month.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, carries unanimously, thank you, before we leave. Mike Eppright, I see you're on the call, do you have any other concerns on the discontinuance of Pine Brook that we should hit on?
No, Bob, it sounds like it went forward pretty smoothly, I know my client. Communicated with me that she received the notice, she's the only property owner that has an interest. Because she owns on both sides of the road now, that's being discontinued for sure now. And then also there was a sign posted, so I think we complied with the thirty-day notice requirements and publication requirements, so we should be good.
Okay, thank you, Mike.
Appreciate it.
All right, moving on to new business, we've got four items in the new business to talk about. The first one in your package, you should have gotten some information on a proposed purchase and sale agreement between the town for. Quarter acre parcel of land that's actually adjacent to the Cove. Higginham Cove property down closer to the river. There is nothing on that property right now, however, technically it has been approved, there's a building lot and if sold. A new buyer could erect a house there, even though it's in the floodplain, as long as the. First floor elevation's above the flood level, whatever it is down there. Access to it would be a problem, it would also create problems for us on use of the. Property at Higginham Cove, it'd just be an impediment. So Bill Warner was approached by the property owner, those two have been negotiating. And the forty thousand dollar asking price was reduced to twenty-one thousand, it's reflected in the purchase and sale agreement. We still have to do due diligence and the other checks. What I'm asking for from the Board of Selectmen is approval, as we did with the Rossi property. To go ahead and sign a purchase and sale agreement and if it turns out any. Red flags come up, we still have the option to drop out of it.
This is Sean.
I'll say, sorry. As when. Property acquisition, it's gotta go to a town meeting ultimately.
This is Sean, I was gonna ask about that, I thought we had to go to the town meeting, but I actually, I'm all in favor for the purchase of this property, it just makes some sense to. To, to bring it into what we already own down there, so I will make a motion that we, that we sign the agreement.
Okay, thanks, Sean, motion's been made, any further discussion, Kate, any questions?
This is Kate, no, no questions, Bill had explained this to me previously, so. Thank you, Bill, for catching this, I think it's, makes a whole lot of sense. To move forward with this, as long as it's, you know, a clean bill of sale.
Okay. All right, and again, I can't stress enough, and I know I say it a lot in these meetings, but. My people understand that. We can't purchase the property without going to a town meeting to get the approval. And unlike the discontinuance of property we just did and the easements we just did. There isn't a justification to do this under the emergency orders as there was for those, so this will have to go to a town meeting. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right, motion carries. Next thing we have on here, a discussion of the. Town's operating budget fiscal year twenty twenty-one. I've only gotten one more piece of information, there are two areas that the Board of Selectmen has not yet approved the proposed budget. One is the health or the benefits and insurance, and as I mentioned earlier, we're still waiting to hear in particular about pension plans and. Health insurance, although the health insurance news looks like it'll be good. The preliminary on the town employee pension looks like it'll be a savings over last year. Firefighter pension may increase, but we're still trying to get those numbers. So the ninety-five line item, ninety-five insurance and benefits is not ready for any further discussion. However, Valley Shore let us know, good news, they had originally told us to budget for a one percent increase in their fees. Have since gotten back to us, said there'll be no increase at all. So now we can set that budget, it's the same as last year, which was a hundred and eighteen thousand, seventy-six dollars for our dispatch fee. So I'd like a motion to approve that, so we close out that section of the budget and then. We'll discuss the rest at the joint meeting, like I said, which I believe is next Monday.
This is Sean, I will, I'll make a motion, we approve the, the Valley Shore line. At the, at the level we had it from last year.
Okay, thank you, Sean. Any further discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. All right, that's approved. Capital budget is on here, it's. Capital budget has been sent to you, please look it over, it'll be topic of discussion at the joint meeting. This Saturday, there was, this past Saturday, there was a budget workshop. Public Works was there to talk about their operating budget, which they've already talked to us about, but Board of Finance. And also capital budget and ambulance was there to talk about both as well. So these discussions will be the highlight or will be brought up at the next Board of Finance meeting, our joint meeting. Any questions on the capital budget right now?
I have none at this time.
Okay, and I see Kate shaking her head no, so we'll move on. Last thing. I want to bring up, the governor issued an executive order, ten E, like Edward. Among other things, it allows towns to extend the times for preparation of their budget. And delay holding any public hearings, as long as the first one is held by June thirtieth. According to, as you know, according to our charter, we'd have to hold our town meeting on about May nineteenth. I believe the town budget hearing, which has to be two weeks before, is already scheduled for May fifth. I'm asking that the Board of Selectmen grant the, grant this resolution to allow the extension of the times. So we can see what happens with the pandemic and what we can do about a public meeting. Again, this would, as of right now, I don't know, we'll have to use that, but we'd like to have the wiggle room. We have to approve this motion if we're gonna do it before the May twentieth expiration of the governor's emergency orders. So this is the only meeting where we have a chance to do that without doing it at a special meeting. And again, it, we may or may not take advantage of the extension, but I wanted to have it be an option for us. Rather than. Not doing it and then finding out we really should have.
This is Kate, so I'll make a motion to approve the adoption of executive order ten E. To allow the board to modify budget timelines, to budget approval timelines as needed. How's that, was that good?
Sounds good to me, Kate. Motion's on the floor, any discussion on the motion?
No, it seems like good business.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. And with that, I believe we have come to the end of our. Agenda, and I have a motion for adjournment?
This is Sean, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Sean. I doubt there'll be any discussion on the motion, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. This motion is never defeated, never.
It's tackle time, that's why.
Yeah, Kate, Sean, thank you for being here, thanks for all the members in the audience, again, Jen, thanks for your presentation. Night, everybody.
Yes.
Good night, we'll see you on Monday.